Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. This Monday, September 17th, 2018. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, October 1st, 2018. If you would, Mr. Paulo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bostancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
We are all accounted for, so we have a quorum. The agenda included a executive session. I don't know if that got changed on the website or not. So, just for those who might be surprised, but that won't come until the end of the meeting and after the legislative portion. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the minutes from September 4th, 2018. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sylvester, second by Ms. Warden. All in favor of approving the minutes from September 4th, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. Welcome Mayor.
Good evening, President Biden-Dyke and council members. Nice to see everyone here this evening. First, the elephant in the room is the new sound system here that we have acquired. Tim Monet of our Building Standards Department was sort of the lead on getting that taken care of for us. It helps with people in the room, but it also helps with the TV presence, so they have a better sound to go along with the picture. So hopefully it will prove beneficial to all of us and to our citizens. I want to bring your attention to an invite that we all received. Says you're invited to the Ellen Shapiro Natatorium Open House. It's going to be this Wednesday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM up at the natatorium. Our city was a player in that. They'd asked us if we could partner with them to help redo the pool in the natatorium, and we did that earlier this year. So I'll send this out in electronic form, so that you have that, but I just wanted to make sure that you all knew of that invitation. On your table, I passed out audit that we received from the state auditor, talking about medical marijuana and some problems that they've found and inconsistency. So I know that's been an issue for us over the last year, and I just wanted to keep you abreast of some of the things that we've received from the state auditor's office. Tonight, issue in front of you is the Fair Event Center. Sandra Hall and Marty Starkey have joined us tonight to hopefully answer questions or give their outlook on the event center and what it might do for our town. So I think that Mr. Ansel is going to ask them to speak at the start of his introduction for that legislation. And to finish up, just, this is a very nice note, but it's sort of a sad note, too. Ron Ream, who's been a member of our Planning Commission for 24 years, has submitted his resignation. Ron and I actually served on the Planning Commission together when I started in the ranks of the city organization. When Ron was on the Planning Commission, the biggest thing on the North End was the idea of Bueller's Mill Town. It wasn't formed, it wasn't there. Neither was Lowe's, or Walmart, or any of that development on the North End. So he's been helping lead the charge on our Planning Commission for over 24 years. So I just wanted to bring recognition to him and the others that are volunteers on our boards and commissions that serve our city so well. With that, we're here to answer questions and serve however we can in the meeting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do have a petition with regard to liquor license. If you would please then read it.
Green Brier Event Center Inc., DBA, Green Brier, 50 Rithville Road, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. They are asking for a permit class of a D5.
And as you know, and I know I repeat myself, but we have to consider these, all these options. We can either request that a hearing on it be held here, or in Columbus, or we can waive the hearings. So what's your pleasure, council?
Motion to waive, Mr. President.
Motion to waive by Mr. Ansel, is there a second? Second by Mr. Myers. If you would, please call the roll on the motion to waive.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvestry?
Yes.
Warden? Yes.
Okay, if you would, please let the Department of Liquor Control know we are waiving the hearings.
Are they open for business?
I don't know.
I don't believe they are. I'm sorry, I don't believe they are at this point in time, but I think their intent is to try to open this fall. Mr. Dutton, is that correct?
New owners?
Yes.
If there are new owners, they'll have to reapply them, won't they, for a transfer?
You know, I don't deal in liquor license at the state level, so I can't give you a straight answer if they can be transferred across or not.
I know we've transferred them in the past, and I didn't know if this was a new or a transfer.
Yeah, I do not know the answer to that, so we can try to find out.
Typically, if it's in transition, you just renew it, and then the new owners will make an application for a transfer. Good question. All right, we have a number of people who have signed up, and we can maybe bifurcate it. Those who are here for the change in the zoning, you can either speak now, or you can wait until we have the public hearing, or you can speak now and then speak again. Those are here for other matters other than a public hearing, now's the time to speak. So the first person, is it Ms. Severs?
Francine Severs.
Would you like to speak now, or wait until we have the public hearing on this?
I'd like to, I missed one hearing, so I'd like to express some of my concerns, because it's all going to be developed behind.
Right, and I'm just saying, you can speak now, or you can wait until we hold the public hearing, and then you can...
Will that be at this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think I'll wait until you call the public hearing, so I hear if you have anything to say that may inform me.
Ms. Hall, I see you've signed up for the event center, so now's the time to speak, or ever hold your peace. And if you're going to speak, we have a new place to speak. If you'd stay, go up there, so we can properly record you, state your name and address, and tell us why you're here.
Sandra Hall, Director, Main Street, Worcester, 377 West Liberty Street, Worcester. I'm just here to support the campaign, which is Over the Top, and the Fair Board's new addition for the center, Event Center, on the grounds of the fair. Basically, for downtown, it's going to put heads in beds and feet on the street, and we always need lots of people coming to the downtown. The Event Center will hold a lot of people with a lot of different kinds of events, and I think Marty has a really good handle on that, what's going to happen with that. But I think those people will not only stay at the Event Center, they will come up the street to the downtown and utilize the services of the downtown and help to continue the stability of what is there. So, thank you very much.
And Ms. Starkey's here to also talk about the Event Center contribution.
Good evening, I'm Marty Starkey with the Wayne County Convention and Visitors Bureau, 428 West Liberty in Worcester. As you said, I'm here for the same reason as Sandra. Obviously, we support the Event Center at the fairgrounds. I just wanted to give you a couple of facts from the Buckeye Event Center, which is the main reason we need a facility such as the one at the fairgrounds, is because we lost the Buckeye Event Center in 2016. Their last full year of business in 2015, they had over $826,000 in sales, which was about 54,000 people there at the Buckeye Event Center. And then in 2016, they were only open January through May, they had $646,000 worth of sales and almost 40,000 people for those events. So you can see they were going to have just a banner year in 2016, had they been able to stay open. So, you know, we know that when the people go to the fairgrounds, whether they're down there for an agricultural event, or it's, even if it's a group of motorhomes staying down there, or whatever it is, they all go downtown to eat and to enjoy the, you know, the ambiance of the downtown. So we're, you know, we need that facility. All these places that came to the Buckeye Event Center, I can't say all, but to my knowledge, almost all of them are going outside of the county now for those same types of meetings. So we obviously need a facility that we can house those here in Wayne County, so we can get that economic impact to our community. Thank you.
347 North Grand Street, my name is Mr. Garris. The Wayne County Fairground is for the county. The bed tax, I would have thought, should be shared amongst the county. 4-H Pavilion is a very fantastic idea, but why can't we spread that bed tax money, which is earmarked, to maybe some of our smaller communities who don't have hotels, or motels, or restaurants, and would love to have the crowd and the people and the foot traffic come to their little town, too?
Mr. Garris, that has nothing to do with this contribution, so...
Well, it's open a little for discussion, that was my thought. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Meyer, I don't know what you're here to speak on. Mr. Meyer? Mr. Meyer?
I thought I was thinking it was supposed to be for this, it was for up around Hunter's Chase.
Are you going to be discussing that tonight? Hunter's Chase?
Yeah, probably up there, it's a gold lift one.
Oh, you're talking about the Smithville Western, oh, okay.
I was saying it was supposed to be...
Oh, okay. All right. So you're going to either speak now, or wait until we have the public hearing, which will be coming up momentarily, so...
I just thought you were going to tell us what's going to go there, because I thought it got approved, didn't it? I came down a month ago, or...
Sir, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, but that's because I've not, I've got a hearing problem here.
Well, we just bought a condo up there, and we came down last month for the City Hall, and they were talking about all that land and what was going to be going there. And I got this notice from City Hall, saying that that was what the meeting tonight was about. So I wanted to find out what's going to go where.
Well, and that's going to be presented tonight, and...
Oh, is it? Okay.
And, you know, I just want to make sure if you had any, you know, comments with regard to what your position is on this, you know?
We're right alongside where the cornfield is, and we were just wondering what's going to be put into there, because it's nice and quiet there right now.
Mm-hmm.
And we just spent a lot of money to buy the place. So we'd like to know, is it going to be real noisy there?
Well, we'll find out. So I can't tell you.
That's why I can't.
Okay.
I saw you folks, and I thought, that's a whole different group of folks.
And Ms. Dellyard, is it Molson? You want to wait till the public hearing? Okay. Did I miss anyone? All right, I don't think I've missed anyone who would be speaking during the communications from public. So that brings us back to committee reports. I don't think we have any committee reports. So that does bring us to public hearings. Both will be presented by Mr. Sanders, although the second one, I think you'll need to probably ask council's approval to postpone it, since it's on the agenda, so... Anyways, the first one with regard to East Smithville Western Road is going forward tonight, so I turn it over to you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we'll open the, we'll open the first public hearing this evening to discuss the zoning map amendment for East Smithville Western Road and Friendsville Road property. Basically, what we've got here, when we approved the annexation of the, of this parcel of land into the city, it was annexed in as an R1, with the understanding that there would be what we're going to discuss this evening, which is amendments to the zoning. The suggestions, or what they've asked for this evening, or what they've asked us to approve, and what's actually already been approved by the Planning Commission, was what we anticipated the situation to be, which is the property that would be to the west of Friendsville was going to be asked to be rezoned as C2, which would be a commercial property. The property to the east of Friendsville would be C3, to a point approximately halfway to the, to the actual eastern property line. And then we've got a section of R3 to the north, on the east side of the property, a section of R4 below that, or southern, south of that. Again, what we had anticipated with this, and what we had understood, and I say "we" as a community, and I guess as a committee, we understood that this was, what we're looking at is there's no surprises in this. I guess before we get into everybody's questions or whatnot, I thought, Andrew, did you have anything to add? Mr. Dutton, did you have anything to add to that?
I might just note, the Planning Commission heard the application at their last regularly scheduled meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application. I believe Planning Commission and staff's recommendation is also approval, as it provides a range of zonings that are desirable in the North End, that are needed in the city of Worcester, both commercial and multifamily residential development. You have in your packets there the differences between some of the districts there. C3 in the middle there is obviously the most intensive commercial district, something like big box retail, or automotive, all the way down to office can go in that district. C2, which is on the west side of Friendsville Road, is a bit of a step down from the C3. Retail buildings are limited to 50,000 square feet. Automotive uses are not permitted, so it's a little less intensive commercial district. And then the R3 and R4 on the east side, they're both multifamily districts. R3 has a maximum density of eight units an acre, and is more of condominium-style-type multifamily development. It can be apartments or condos, it's just that kind of one entrance, maybe a garage attached. The apartments on, the new ones on Mindy Lane by Redwater are a good example of what's allowed in R3. And then R4 is a more traditional, you know, apartment zoning district.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open it up to the public, anyone which is to speak regarding this topic, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and...
I thought I wouldn't have much to say. I'm Lynn Molson. I used to be a Dellyard, and I, in fact, I call myself the mayor of Madisonburg, even though it's gone. But I am very concerned, because I live in a cluster home about 35 feet from the boundary on the east side, where there are tall trees, and there are five homes. And I have a very cut-off yard, because the commercial, the builder made a mistake when he made the house, so we had to move it back, or, I mean, to the east, so it's actually touching the boundary of the neighbor's yard, and I only have like four feet on that side. And on this side, I have to allow at least 35 feet for the water that has flooded into my yard. So I'm very concerned about the, what we call a creek, which on my area now is about this wide, with about eight or 10 feet covered by brush and grass, and some of those trees falling and things like that. So, and I've been trying to care for it for 22 years, and act as if it's a creek, all the neighbors have done that. So we're concerned about what will happen to that, not only to the trees on the west side of the creek, tall silver maple trees that are cracking, and they're pretty, I love them, but, and it's a beautiful scene, but I'm concerned about what will happen to the trees, number one. What will be built along that area? What will be done to the water? Because it's a very low-lying land. It's probably the lowest in Wayne County, coming from 585 to, and from Burbank, we'll say, flows to that point. So it's somewhat frightening. And I'm hearing tonight that the 20-foot road is coming from the west through to our people across the street from me, and cutting off all of what they have in the back of their house, so they'll be sleeping about 10 feet from the road. So that's what we're concerned about, and I think that wraps it up. I have nothing else to say.
My name is Francine Severs. I live in the same cluster of homes off the, right behind my yard is Smithville Western, and the residential apartments or housing is going to go right behind the creek. Number one, I'm concerned about, we have a country road on both directions going down Smithville Western and Friendsville. At some point, to accommodate all of this development commercially, residentially, I want to know, was there any thought to where you're going to expand the roads? Are you going to take half of my property, and then leave me with 20 feet, and then three lane roads to accommodate all of this commercial residential homes? I listened to traffic from 6:30 in the morning to 8:30 in the morning, solid traffic, people going down Smithville Western. And then I listened to the same traffic coming back for three hours in the evening. So now, I'm not sure with all this commercial development and the traffic, whether anybody's even taken into consideration that you're going to have to expand these roads, either on Friendsville that's four lanes, you're going to have to have lanes that cut in to accommodate all these people and the commercial sections. We already have two roads. We have our road on Ogden, which we can't get out of half the time currently, and we have to gun our cars to get out onto that road. So I don't, I'm very concerned with power lines on one side of the road and so forth. I'm concerned about what you plan to develop. I'm concerned about the density. I'm concerned about the lights. I'm concerned about the creek. I'm just concerned about you're going to be possibly building apartments. How many kids are going to be trying to run across the creek? Are you going to save our trees? Are you going to put up a six-foot wall abatement and guarantees the creek in a boundary between us? Are there going to be lights constantly on? What is your estimated traffic? Surely you know this by now. You've planned it, you've already decided what you want to zone it as. The R1 was just to get it approved, so then I understand that we will go forward, maybe 10 years down the road, maybe not, maybe you'll approve it immediately. I don't know how high you're going to go if you want to do apartment complexes. Am I going to be looking down my dead-end street now at the back of apartments? I don't know what I'm going to be looking at. I am extremely concerned that the roads and the area as it stands now does not in any way, shape, or form accommodate increased traffic. And then I understand the county's going to put a roundabout down there at Smithville and Friendsville, where the four-way intersection blinks. Okay, where's the light going to go to get into the commercial section? And where's the light going to go to get all the people into all these homes and apartments? And you could have two cars per apartment or home, then you go on top of that, in front of that, have residential on our side, which I don't know whether, is it east-west? I've only been here a year. And then in addition to that, our community and our homes are dealing with the pond, which is going to be basically straight out in front of our homes, where we're, that's where the refuge or the, I call it poop, is going to be possibly developed and put into a a aeration pond, but there's no aeration, they told me. They just lay the poop in the pond and hope it gets a good crust. So then we all may be smelling the smells in that area, so there's an environmental group trying to fight that. So there's two things going on. You want to all of a sudden develop it, but I don't have any answers to whether there's been any environmental impact statements? What has anybody done to find out what you're going to do to abate crime? Kids getting over the fence crawling in the creeks? If we're going to maintain the creeks? We have no, we don't know what the light levels are going to be, we don't know what the trash pickup's going to increase. So if you ever go down that street, you'll notice it's just a titty-two-way lane. And since I moved here a year ago, I've talked to the city, I've talked to the county. I've begged you guys to decrease the speed to 35 miles, not 45 or 55. There's no sign out there, because half the road between Ogden and Smithville Western and Friendsville, there's no speed limit. That's county, I've been told. And so nobody can do anything with that. But I begged everybody, slow the speed down, down to 35 miles an hour. Well, if, if I'm having trouble getting someone to cooperate with me over slowing down the speed, then how am I going to deal with both the city and the county on this project? Who do I go to when I have a problem? I've had no luck at the current time, just trying to slow the speed limit down. I did, however, get the city to put up a sign that said 35 miles approaching, but on the other side, 55, whatever, doesn't matter. They go through the 35-mile intersection at whatever speed they want in the morning. So this is a problem with me. You're annexing it, you're approving it, and then I can't even get you to slow the traffic down. And I've been trying. I've even talked to one of the, one of the county commissioners, I believe, and she said she'd work on it, too. Nothing. So my concern is, as a citizen, as a owner of the property, are you going to end up taking half my backyard, which faces the Smithville Western, when you need it to expand the road? And then I'm 20 feet from it? What is going to happen to us as a community who have the cluster of homes? We're very proud of them. But at this point, you increase traffic, increase crime, increase everything without really understanding what you're doing to the community along there. And I'm going to, as long as I'm standing, be on everybody's back, and I'm going to be looking at environmental impact statements, I will read them in their entirety. I will be looking at anything that comes out of these statements. And if there's any lies in them, I will be upset, because I've seen that done in Seattle. I worked with different cities, and I volunteered for cities. So I'm not ignorant to some things that go on, but this cannot go on without us being guaranteed what is going to do, because they've already constructed a show to... guaranteed what is going to do, because they've already constructed, showed a picture. I don't even have a picture. How tall do they want the building to go? Surely they gave that to you before. And you as a council, you should have been investigating this for a long time before. We probably should have had, you should have been given something other than the map. I got the map. And a lady across the street gave it to me. I wasn't even notified of the meeting. So only because of a lady across the street did I get the hearsay on what was going on behind my home. But since then, I have received letters after I threw a fit. But that was not provided to me before the meeting or had the chance. By the time the woman across the street came over and said, "The meeting's tonight and this is it," I went, "Oh, my God." I got here, it was already over with. So we need to be advised of everything in our community in writing, and it cannot go on without you really seriously considering where is all this traffic going to go? Who's going to build the roads? Is it going to be the city? Is it going to be the county? Who's what? Is the street stripped down, one-half county, one-half city? I don't even know that, but I'm angry that I couldn't get the speed limit. And when the city came out and put up a sign that said thirty-five miles going this way, approaching, then I said, "Well, what about the other side of the road?" They said, "That's not ours to worry about, that's county." A what? So if I can't get the speed limit controlled, how are we going to control this big operation and this big development? It's bigger than we think. Yes, I know the city wants to develop. I know we all want development, but this is very complex. And who's going to be on top of it? Who's going to be taking our interest into consideration as well as their interests? And that's what I have to say right now, but I am extremely concerned about how we as a community are going to be impacted. We already have Walmart, Lowell's, all those other things. And now you want to build another commercial section? Like I said, they could be abating your, they could have the back of the trash bins facing you, the lights facing you. That's what you're here for. So if you have to stand up and say something, so you could be looking now with your condo now at the back of all the buildings and the trash bins and the lights that will never be taken off.
I'm on the corn side of the town.
Yeah, I know. I'm on the corn side too. It's what I thought I bought when I bought my home a year ago, our corn. But this is progress, but progress has to take into consideration your citizens and the community, plus you have to consider that we also are facing the problem of the pond. So, and I'm not even know what will be smelling in the area. Someone told me recently that they couldn't go to certain restaurants in certain areas where there were ponds because they didn't want to come out of the restaurant and be smelling it. So that's another consideration. How much of that smell is going to impact us? Maybe six, seven miles directly in front of it. And so there's multiple things going on here. Please consider us. Please look into environmental impact statements. I want to see pictures. I want to see the road development they're coming up with. And are they going to be taking half my backyard? That all has to be discussed in their diagrams in the future. And if you're going to, go ahead and prove this, please make sure you know what you're doing, because do we really need that small section of road impacted with thousands more cars? How much more can it take? You have power lines that are huge on one side, so you cannot expand the road on that side. You have to expand it on the other side. So that would be my backyard. It would be my hill on Smithville Western. I don't want to be twenty feet from all of this. Thank you for listening and listening to my concerns, but we all should be concerned about all development, no matter where it is. And if someone here knows how to get that speed limit changed, please let me know. I would love it in writing. I can give you my address. Thank you.
Thank you.
You would be next if you want to talk.
Yeah, I'm frustrated. That's all I can tell you.
Is there any, is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding this topic? Mr. Garris?
That sounded pretty exciting. Thank you. The mayor mentioned earlier that this could be developed in the hopes of gaining a lot of income tax. Well, let this be warned that the income tax will be going to the state. So maybe this development isn't necessarily the best way to develop all of this. Secondly, the Montgomery some time ago stated that we have a housing shortage. And here it's mentioning here, multifamily. We have a housing shortage of medium income, you said, but we have a greater housing shortage of low income. And with the likes of some people, we're destroying that kind of neighborhood now where this quarry wants to expand of low-income housing. I don't hear any speaking of low-income housing in this development.
Mr. Garris, do you have any, do you have any specific information related specifically to the change in zoning request for this property at Smithville Western and Friendsville Road?
I'm stating concerns like this woman before me, and I don't appreciate you trying to shut me down or edit me because you don't like what I'm saying.
Oh, I don't care what you're saying, sir.
I know you don't, but you're trying to shut me down.
No, I'm just trying to get it so that you're going to stick on point to this topic.
I'm on point. My concern is I don't hear any conversation about low-income housing if that's to be developed. And please consider that.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll say that this topic had its public hearing and we'll close the public hearing related to zoning map amendment for East Smithville Western Road and Friendsville Road. Thank you.
I have one there. This is petty, but I care about my house because I can.
I care about my house. I was told by my builder, who's one of your owners, that if I spend time making my house nicer as years went on, I would help the people surrounding me that I used to laugh at because I lived in a nicer home until I was widowed and I bought this house with all I had in my hand. So since then, I have, you know, added trees and bushes and painted and bought nice things and had the look changed, put a deck on facing the new four-story apartment or whatever it's going to be, which ought to be beautiful. And the, and there's the creek, which is filling up with the trash from the farm that is sitting there, the corn field. I've had, if that creek is to be developed in some way, it's not mine. It's not on my property. So the owner has to figure out what is going to happen to that water because that ditch or whatever it's in is needed because there's flooding going on. The corn field is full with little lakes every time it rains hard. So, and I was in the sixty-nine flood a half a mile from there. And I was the only person, because I was right on Little Apple Creek, a half a mile away, that did not flood five feet in my basement. So I was helping all the other neighbors because again, that's a low, low area. So I'm just concerned about, again, the tall trees and the view I have, the creek, and that's thirty feet from my dining room, and what, what is going to happen to those? There have been dead animals in the creek, including a large steer on his back smelling ripe, and many other animals that I've had to kill myself or pour some kind of asphyxiating powder over them until they rot. I can't find anyone to help with, and I don't know how you could find anyone to help with animals. There are deer dying in the corn field all the time, running across Smithville Western. There's just so many country problems going on. I was at the hearings twenty years ago when, or twenty-three years ago, when the water was made available to Madisonburg, the city water, and I was grateful for that because there was raw sewage running all through the farmland and the housing land. I used to walk down and up drive and there was raw sewage all along the sides of those roads. But now that's been changed with city water and those people, because we're fixing our homes, they're fixing their homes. And there's new little streets like Ashton Way and Country Place and, you know, that Alan Ratliff has built. And there's, there, those people are taking nicer and nicer care of everything they have. So we're just in general hoping for something that, we understand low-income housing is needed or in low-cost housing. And our houses were low-cost, but we've turned them into a nice property, a little village. So we're hoping that's part of what you're doing is going to be the same thing. And that there may be another place for a large, tall apartment. We don't know what multi-storing needs. Any information we've had has been so minimal in description that it has to be passed. Of course, we'll annex it. It sounds great, but from our standpoint, we're just thinking ahead, that's all. So we just ask you to think with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so Mr. Blatendike, what do we, what do I need to do then related to the second public hearing?
I, I think just get a affirmative vote of a majority that it be postponed.
Okay.
But as you noted and will note again, that the public hearing on the zoning map amendment on East Smithville Western Road and Friendsville Road has been had.
Correct.
So that brings us to the zoning map amendment on ten fifty-five East Henry Street. And the owner applicant has requested that the hearing be continued. So I turn it back over to you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Blatendike. Yes, as was stated, the applicant has asked the hearing to be continued regarding the ten fifty-five East Henry Street. So at this point, we will not have any conversation regarding that, but related to that then, with motion, the council continue the hearing on the zoning map amendment for ten fifty-five East Henry Street?
I'll second it.
I'll second by Mr. Ansel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. We'll continue that hearing. Brings us to unfinished business. It's the second reading of Resolution Number Twenty-Eighteen, Day Zero Five Zero. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. If you would, Mr. Paul, please read the document.
Resolution Number Twenty-Eighteen dash oh five oh. A resolution authorizing the mayor to make a gift to the Greater Wayne County Foundation for the benefit of the Wayne County Fairground Improvement Campaign.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, before going into discussion, I would like to make a motion to make the noted amendments to the original resolution that was presented two weeks ago. We have the redline copy pertaining to this piece of legislation. And the new fiduciary control will be processed through the Wayne County Community Foundation. Again, we understand their role and charitable contributions and donations in terms of their fiduciary capacity. All they are is a holding place for these type of initiatives within our community, whether it be the hospice facility or the fairgrounds facility. And then we can go into discussion. It does not change the content of this resolution. The prior reference was, help me, Mr. President, because I don't have the previous resolution here, but it was, it was referenced as the Wayne, Greater Wayne County Foundation for the benefit of the Wayne County Fairground. Project remains the same. The misreference of the Greater Wayne County Foundation was nothing more than an error and we're correcting it for legal ease terms. So I will make the motion to amend Resolution Two Thousand and Eighteen dash zero fifty, and then we can proceed within discussion.
Yes, to read Wayne County Community Foundation.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the rule on the motion to amend Resolution Number Twenty-Eighteen, Day Zero Five Zero?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
So said resolution is now amended. Again, I turn to you, Mr. Ansel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
To present this.
We had lengthy discussion at our last council session, so we'll be briefed this evening. This is for a significant capital campaign for a new junior fair livestock and events center at our fairgrounds, twenty-six thousand one hundred square feet. It does fill a significant void within our community as Marty Starkey had highlighted with the Wayne County Convention Bureau with the Buckeye Events Center's closure. This could have an impact of, you know, three-quarters of a million visitors to our community that right now that we have lost. So the timing from a commercial perspective looks very good, plus the importance of 4H within our community, not only Worcester, but the entire Wayne County and the importance of the fair in our downtown Worcester. We're very fortunate to have such a world-class facility, you know, one of the best county fairs in the nation is right here in our own backyard. We heard the campaign chairman, John Crumb's compelling argument for this, and I know that each of you have taken this initiative and embraced it and pursued discussion with the appropriate personnel and individuals involved with this initiative. We do have Justin Starland here this evening. He did not make any comments during the, the open communications from the public, but I thank Marty and Sandra Hall for their input. And Mr. Starland, I would open the floor for you if you'd like to make any comments or are you just here to support?
No comment this time.
Okay, you're welcome. Well, thank you for attending. Just for clarity, this funding is coming from our gross bed tax receipts, so it is a funding that would normally have been contributed component to the, the chamber, to the convention bureau and Main Street. So their endorsement, because some of this could impact the gross allocation available. This was a multi-year commitment. It is being derived from funded, proposed funding from our bed tax. If there are questions, we can talk about that this evening. And because we all have clarity and understanding of this initiative, and I know there are some concerns on behalf of council, I will be moving this to third and final reading this evening. We've had a couple of weeks and even prior to digest this initiative. So we'll go on and get our business done this evening by calling a vote, suspending the rules and proceeding accordingly. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules and move Resolution Two Thousand and Eighteen dash zero five zero to third and final reading this evening.
There's a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended. Do you have another motion?
Well, should I open the floor for discussion?
I think you have a, for, make the motion in a second, then we'll discuss.
Motion to adopt, pending discussion.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Mr. Bastancic saying go first. Okay, now you want to open it?
Yes, I will open the floor for discussion from council. Yes, Ms. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. As you know, I was absent at the last meeting, so forgive me if I'm being redundant in any of my questions. One of my main concerns, and maybe this is, I guess, unnecessary, given the fact that we've had a very generous contribution from, I believe, Mr. Grossgeen, that has pushed this campaign over the top. But, but my concern is that the, the funding will be going into a facility that will compete with other privately-owned tax-paying businesses in the city of Worcester. I'm I'm wondering how you would respond to that? Do you have an argument, or is that just something that we're looking to ignore? I mean, if, if, for example, the Greenbrier that's being purchased, if they were to come to us and ask for funding so that they could put in a new air conditioning or whatever, is that something that we would, the council would give money to?
Oh, of course not.
Right, so that's my, that's my concern.
Mm-hmm. No, well, and that is a valid concern, because there is one event that this could compete with on an annual basis, and that would be the Chamber Annual Dinner. So, yeah, there could be some indirect competition, providing there was another facility that could provide that service at a future date. Very similar to the other things, though, when we offer tax abatement, some of those reductions or tax decreases could be perceived as being competitive also with other businesses within the area. So, yeah, there's always that discussion and always that concern, but it's a very good point, and that's always healthy discussion points in the past when we've had these issues, because whatever the case, somebody making that capital investment could have soft competition or indirect competition, and this could certainly be the case as it relates to that one event within our city.
Well, and I'm sure there are many more events that would hopefully go, you know, be just chosen between Fisher Auditorium, or Greenbrier, or any other number of places. I'm not saying that we don't need this event center. I really do think that it's filling a void, especially in our downtown community. I'm just wondering if perhaps the funding could be applied in a less direct manner, perhaps helping with the, the path between the fairgrounds and our lovely downtown. I just, I would, I would really hesitate to give, to give money to something that is maybe indirect competition.
And there has been some discussion with that, but if it's $30,000 worth of asphalt, it's still $30,000.
Sure.
So, if it's $30,000 of infrastructure, it's still thirty. So, I understand the semantics end of it, but it is what it is, and there was some discussion as to that. This could either be a capital improvement of curbing, of sidewalk, of asphalt, but it's still $30,000. So, of which it's going to be either cash or like-in-kind contribution, so, not to be critical, but it is what it is. I mean, whether it's $30,000 of cash or $30,000 of infrastructure, it's still the, the donation that's being identified here.
Well, I don't want to split hairs, but I have to point out, if we put sidewalks or something like that, that benefits the public at, at large and the people who live in and around the fairgrounds.
Yeah, if it's outside the fairgrounds.
Yes.
Yeah, but if it's in the fairgrounds, going into the curbing and the street, you know, going into that area, if it's outside the fairgrounds, then that's city municipal property, absolutely.
And my other issue, because I, I tend to agree with Ms. Warden, is the issue, these other places pay, pay real estate taxes. I have seen nothing on what, if any, this facility is going to pay with regard to real estate.
It's less than $2,000 a year that the, the fairgrounds pays for their property taxes to the city. Mr. Sanders did some research, so.
Well, and, and I get that. I don't know if this building's going to be, you know, they're going to request, you know, an abatement from tax, because it's owned by a nonprofit. So, those are some of my concerns.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, one of the points that Ms. Warden had was, you know, you mentioned that, you know, tax abatements are sometimes subsidizing competition. I know that we did Planet Fitness, they got a tax abatement which competes with other workout facilities in our area. I would say, though, that a direct request from the administration to make a cash contribution is different than a tax abatement, because the tax abatement has a process of application. There are rages and, and job requirements and, and things like that that they need. The school board has to approve those kinds of abatements. So, I think that's different than a direct gift of $30,000 to an event center. I'm all in support of the Fair Board, Junior Fair Board. I, I was a Junior Fair Board participant. I'm all in favor of that. I do think, though, that she makes a good point as far as direct contribution to a competitor to local businesses like Greenbrier, or the Spoon Market Event Center, or others in our community. I hesitate that we do it in a direct way like that, although I'm in support of the project. I'm torn between some of the arguments as to whether or not we should be, as a city, going directly into a fund like that. Just, just a concern, but I think there's a difference between tax abatement and a direct donation.
Well, and to Mrs. Warden's point, the fact is, they've, they're over the top right now. They've hit their, their targets, so understandably so. Both, both justifiable arguments, there's no doubt.
But, Jen, I, I don't know how this will work from parliamentary procedure, but perhaps we could leave this on a second, since there's no urgency. They have already met their fundraising goal, and we could consider the best opportunity for, for the administrations in our city to show support of this project, maybe in a different manner, or just have more time for people, since they would miss the last meeting and.
We, we still have to, to vote on this issue. Yeah, then they can come back with a counter tonight. This is on this legislation for the funding. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I, I just want to explain, your, your request for agenda item, the sheet here, talking about the description of the request. John Crum, the campaign chair of Wayne County Fair Grounds Improvement Campaign, has met with me about having the city be a part of improvements. In parentheses, "Event Center, Barn, Parking Area, and Entrance." It, we, we stated it thusly, because we didn't know where they were going to be in the campaign. Since they have reached the goal for the building itself, then I've had discussions with Mr. Crum and also with Sandra Hall and Marty about the idea of doing an entrance way into the facility. And it would be a very similar to what we did along Columbus Avenue, from Route Three coming into the city with the black fencing and the lights and sidewalks and things like that, which improves our community. It gives us a, a cleaner face into Worcester and the fairgrounds and, but still helps support and enhance the, the event center. So, since they've reached their goal, I know Mr. Crum said, "That sounds like a great idea if, if the city would do something like that." As you mentioned, Mr. Ansel, it, it's still a $30,000 donation, so we, we would have constraints on what that entrance way might look like, but we might have CDBG funds or something else that could be used to help enhance that whole area for our public, so. So, that's, that was written expressly with the idea that it gives us a little wiggle room or latitude on how the investment is, is utilized. So, just wanted to give some clarity.
Well, it says it there, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't say anywhere in this resolution, so I, I think the issue is, and hell, I thought that I would have followed him out of here. I thought John Crum was a reincarnation of Music Man. There isn't a better bandleader. My biggest concern is using public funds for a nonprofit enterprise, but, and I'm not, I, I will give credit to someone else who said, you know, "I think money would be better spent if we could provide some infrastructure that not only benefits the fairgrounds, but also benefits the community in that area." And then I wouldn't have any, any qualms. I do have qualms giving something that's going to compete with private enterprise and isn't going to generate the, the tax dollars that private enterprise does. I, I, I think it's a great project. Like I said, they could have had a better spokesperson than Mr. Crum, but, you know, that's the one power that this council has, is the power of the purse. And as fiduciaries, it's an obligation to spend money in the best manner possible that benefits the community, being the citizens of the city of Worcester.
Mr. Myers?
Mayor Brown, would you then suggest that we hold off until this can be clarified to where the money could be applied in an appropriate direction and, and add to the building?
I don't think so, no. I, I think that you go ahead and, and make a choice whether you're going to do the donation or not. If you were to look at each piece of legislation, the, the language on the front is more of a generalized type of description. The, the meat of pieces of legislation really are in these descriptions that all of our managers, when they bring something forward to you or describe.
You speak through the journal, this is the journal. What it says on the back is not the legislation, so I, I've got to disagree with you, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, if, if we crafted something that said we would contribute to 30,000 to the public portion surrounding the fairgrounds, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But donate $30,000 to the Wayne County Community Foundation with nothing in the legislation that details the limitations on how that money is spent, then I don't think, at least from my view, and as Dennis Miller says, that's my opinion, I'd be wrong, but I think we're not doing our due diligence as fiduciaries for the citizens of the city of Worcester.
You, you are council, you have the, the say, so you decide. I just want you to know that this is on public record with the TV audience, and what we've represented to you is what conversations I had with Mr. Crum and, and the community partners that, that have also weighed in. And I agree completely that since the event center has already gotten the funding necessary, the entrance way is more of a likely scenario for this.
And by, for clarification, the proposed entryway discussion would be external of the fairgrounds proper?
It would be a gateway into the fairgrounds.
So, it would be a perimeter type of off-main road into the fairground?
On our public streets, yes.
Well, and if that's something that council feels compelled, I mean, infrastructure versus donation, it's still the $30,000 to my point, but it does give us an infrastructure improvement partially on municipal ground and partially on county ground. We could say the Fair Ground Improvement Campaign for $30,000 for infrastructure-only improvements related to a gateway entryway.
That was my question, could we amend it?
Absolutely.
And the mayor said no, but.
No, I said, you asked me if you should pass it tonight, and I said yes.
Yeah, he misunderstood.
I believe.
I interpreted like you.
As, as written, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could not pass it tonight and then ask a, a more appropriate resolution be presented to council.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Again, making it amended for infrastructure only. Yes, Mr. Sanders?
Well, I, you know, this, I'll admit, this has been, this has weighed heavy on me since this was introduced. The fair is one of the greatest things that we've got going on in our county. The 4H program, while my children were not involved in 4H, I know is a phenomenal program because of all the kids that I do know that have been involved in 4H. The fact that they want to take some of these aging buildings, they want to get rid of them, they want to bring in, they want to build new buildings to, for, for the fair, for the junior livestock fair portion, i- it's a great thing. I too am hung up on this event center. I tried to do a little bit of research on CAT tax, which is the corporate activity tax, which all businesses have to pay, except businesses that don't have to pay it, which are usually those that are tax-exempt or government-funded or government entities. So, unfortunately, I didn't get a hold very far there, but I did, on the auditor's website, Greenbrier paid $54,000 in property taxes last year. The fairgrounds paid $1,800 in property taxes last year, and I don't know whether this facility is going to fall under the corporate activity tax. I don't know whether it's going to fall under additional property taxes, but for me, at the end of the day, I have a hard time wanting to take public money, giving it to another public entity that is going to compete directly against private businesses that are paying taxes, that are trying to operate in a similar fashion. Now, I, again, I realize that in this situation with this, you know, eighteen, or this 26,000 square foot facility, we are talking apples and oranges, but yet we're not. I mean, we're still talking the same thing, or at least in my opinion, similar enough to where I am not comfortable with willing, be willing to authorize this funding request. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
The, the way this is worded, it mentions that the funds would come from the bed tax. Example is if we were to collect $200,000 in bed tax, if I recall from the legislation of the past, half of that goes back to a joint application with Main Street and the Visitors, Visitors Bureau and the Chamber, and the other half remains of the city. Is the $30,000 then coming out of which half? It's intended to the city half at this point in time. So, 100% out of the city?
Oh, wouldn't be gross receipts off the top and then do the 50% allocation?
That wasn't the plan from moving forward with this. It was on the city side.
Then I misinterpreted that, because that would have had buy-in then from the, the Chamber and Main Street and the Convention Bureau. I mean, on the gross, the gross number would have been reduced accordingly, so thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, it would seem that, that it would share and share alike since they were in support of it here this evening. You know, I did not discuss a monetary situation with them. They are community partners. I was asking for their advice in weighing in on this, because I knew there was concerns, especially with Mr. Sanders. So, I thought, you know, let's have as many people who deal with public events in our community as, as Main Street and the Convention and Visitors Bureau do. As, as Sandra said, it's feet on the street and heads in the beds, and if that happened out at the Buckeye Event Center, that would happen in this facility, I believe. I, they, we do need convention space. Will it have a direct impact with, say, the Greenbrier? Potentially, but I, I sort of doubt it. It's just because each would attract, I think, a different venue. A Greenbrier has been more towards, in the past, the, the weddings, the, the corporate meetings, the, the banquets, those kind of things. This is really meant to be a, a, a facility to serve the 4H group at the fair, and then during the 50 weeks that it's not in use for the fair, then to attract other events such as trade shows, like the Buckeye Event Center used to do. Mr. Halbreit's train shows used to be out at the Buckeye Event Center, those kind of things. It's not quite the same venue, in my belief, and that's, that's the difference that, that I feel separates these.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I could, oh, I'm sorry.
Let's bill then to you, Jen.
I think Mayor made a good point there. They are different. From what I understand, the, the 4H center will have a warming kitchen, but not a kitchen that would be regulated to serve, actually serve, prepare and serve food, too. So, if somebody would have to.
Cater.
Have to have it catered down there. So, I think that's a, a big difference as well. And it's, so you're actually, in a bit, in a sense, looking, but the mayor said two different types of organizations that would might be wanted to go to either, either facility.
Ms. Warden?
Um, just to clarify, and I, I have actually gone to John Albreit's train show, and it was located at Greenbrier. So, they did host events like that in the past. That might have even been before Buckeye Event Center ever opened. And I, I'm not stating that you're implying that we're not supporting this. I hope that's not the case, but I feel like perhaps maybe some of the language that you've used has made it feel like we are not in support of this. I, I feel like there's a consensus up here that we are in support of this, and I think that we all could probably say we think it's great for the downtown, it's great for the local economy. I think we just need to be very clear with how we're spending our taxpayers' money, and that's what we're here for.
And, and I, I perfectly agree with that. As I say, I believe the description page, which we use on every single legislation that comes before you, was clear in what it could be used for.
But it's not clear in the legislation, Mayor. If you look at the codified ordinances, the description page never gets in the codified ordinances. And, you know, I, I think I agree with Ms. Warden that most everyone's here in favor of making a contribution towards the public infrastructure, but not a direct gift to the event center.
That's semantics, and I'm on board. We hear it. We will, I will make a motion to withdraw. That's semantics, and I'm on board, we hear it, we will, I will make a motion to withdraw my motion to suspend the rules. And then we will let administration come back, and they can, for the sake of expediency, they can amend, you heard loud and clear the message that council, some of the concerned members are voicing. So let's have a third and final run at it in two weeks, in terms of the funding component dedicated or specified for an infrastructure-type of investment. It's thirty thousand dollars either way, but if it's all outside or entryway, and it is infrastructure-related, and it's great news that they've achieved their campaign goals, and we can beautify a gateway entry into the fairgrounds, because I have to admit, but most of the entrances at the fairground could use a little sprucing up. So this might be a good opportunity to window dress that gateway entryway and have something beautiful within our city. So thanks for everyone's input.
We'll have to have a vote on it.
Yes, thanks for everybody's input, and again, motion to overturn my suspension of the rules.
Since you made the motion, you can move to withdraw.
Withdraw, I withdraw the motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Motion to withdraw the motion to suspend the rule, is there a second?
Second. That might be a first.
Ms. Warden, would you please call the rule on Mr. Ansel's motion?
Yep.
We had the motion second for adoption. Are we withdrawing that at the same time?
Well...
I believe that the motion was withdrawn, or the motion right now is to withdraw the motion to adopt.
Yes, yes.
Because the motion to suspend the rules doesn't matter if we remove the motion.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
So you want to rephrase that motion?
Yes, motion to withdraw the...
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
And Jen, Ward, second.
Thank you for clarification.
Any further discussion on that motion?
I hope not.
Would you please call the rule on the motion to withdraw the motion to adopt?
Ansel.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Bostanzik?
Yes.
Well, we'll consider the current incarnation of this resolution to have had its second reading. So Resolution 2018 Day 050 has had its second reading. That brings us to the new business, its first reading of Ordinance Number 2018 Day 016. I'm kind of disappointed that the property owner and his attorney have left the building. Did Elvis go with them? Anyways, this will be presented by Mr. Sanders. He would, Ms. Apollo, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2018-016, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to R3 attached residential, R4 multi-family residential, C2 community commercial, and C3 general commercial for property located on the south side of East Smithville Western Road and east and west sides of Friendsville Road.
All right, Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, as we discussed in the public hearing, and as it was just described, what we have before us this evening is a change in the zoning map, amending our zoning map for this new property that was annexed into the city most recently. At this point, due to the conversations and the questions from some of the adjacent property owners, at this point, I have all intentions of leaving this on first reading, but would like to hear from any of my fellow council members if you have any questions or concerns related to this as well.
If I may just jump in here, I would like to hear from Mr. Dutton, so he can educate me on the process when you just changed the zoning. This has nothing to do with approving any of the, from what I understand, what specifically is going to build, how it's going to be built, designed. So if I'm putting you on the spot, too bad.
He's got it.
So the application is to obviously rezone the property from R1 to the four different zoning classifications. So as in the past, all we're really doing is changing that zoning map from the R1 to the four proposed zonings. So what you need to take into account is basically all the possible uses and development standards provided in your packet that could go in those possible zoning districts. If approved, and it could be, you know, at the next planning commission meeting, it could be years from now, they'll need to come back for a development plan for basically any portion of that site. At that time, we'll look at things like setbacks, building design, building height, traffic impacts, buffering between these uses and less intense uses. So the planning commission will take all those things into consideration when they make their decision on the individual site plans. If there are any variances involved, that'll be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. A similar letter will be sent out, and it'll be in the paper for a public hearing for any variances. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of the development. Here, we're kind of at a higher level, just looking at the zoning of the property to guide it down that road for development.
I appreciate your clarification, and for the folks that were here earlier, some of the questions they have, there are restrictions on building heights within the zoning classifications, lighting and specifically, there are requirements and restrictions that the developer will have to meet, as well as traffic study and those kinds of things. So at this point in time, I know we don't know answers to some of those, however, there is fairly lengthy, I believe it's three-hundred-and-fifty-two pages of zoning restrictions and requirements that would be applied to any development. And if they wanted to waiver from those, and those are on the city website, if they wanted to waiver from those, they would have to make application, you'd be notified, and those would be only, they'll be considered, they're not just guaranteed. So they can't build a five-story building right next to your home, so.
Well, to that point, Mr. Myers, just for their piece of mine, Andrew, R3, you referenced like the Redwood development off Mindy. They are larger units, attached homes, single-story, two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, but very residential. And R2 would be like a patio or a cluster home, like maybe a Door Knock Estates or up in Deer Creek, the small homes with the zero lot lines. R2's more of a cluster home, almost like the condo complex where the other gentleman, Mr. Myers, lives up to, you know, they're attached units right there. So then, the R4 density could be like the Scottish Highlands, it could be a two-story multi-unit apartment, but that's way back on that property line. Up on your corner, Smithville Western Road and Friendsville, that eastern wall where the creek, there would be a cluster home community there, very similar to yours. Yours aren't attached, but they're close together.
Not as close as all the other more expensive ones.
Yes.
So they have a lot of appeal.
Yeah, but you know what I'm talking about, the Barringtons and the Redwoods. So, yeah, R3 is nicely controlled, you're not going to have a four-story apartment in an R3. Is that correct?
Correct, you could have maybe a two-story row house or something like that, but it's...
Yes, upper level, lower level in a house, right? But not a second story in an apartment complex.
It wouldn't be an apartment complex, but if you had row houses, that'd chat a door and it's first and second story, or more commonly, it might be something like the Hunter's Chase condominiums would be a good example of an R3 development, yeah.
Could I say one more thing?
Please.
Do you? I don't know if all of you are aware that where we live, this five home place is a former wetland, and so right across the little creek, you know, thirty-five feet away, cornfield is rather a wetland. And a lot of the homes have, you have to have that in mind, we don't have basements at all. It can't be done, and it's all shale and water from there to Smithville, or two, I'm assuming to Friendsville and on to Ferbend.
That's where they required an environmental impact statement, I think, the geology statement in order to stake out on that property.
So it is a area of water replacement.
Well, one of the items, too, that Mr. Dutton didn't touch on, that would also be part of this, is Ohio EPA is going to require, is going to have stormwater management control design standards, they're going to have to be adhered to. The City of Worcester's engineering department is the governing body, if you will, for Ohio EPA regarding stormwater design and construction. And at this point, anything that would be done there is going to have to go through those state standards and is going to have to be approved. So, I mean, it's not like they're just going to be able to push some dirt around and do whatever they want. I mean, there's going to be requirements that we're going to have to meet, and at that point, you know, it's not just going to be an arbitrary thing like you've got on an open cornfield right now.
In theory, it could improve significantly.
Pardon?
In theory, if that were developed, they would put the proper drainage tiles in, and so it would actually have a positive impact.
I would hope so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think you'll find dead cows if they ever develop that one day.
I remember actually some, like a mixing mold, after I was in it about four months, because it was poured in really cold weather.
Well, I don't mean to get off on tangent here, and I'll promise to close on this. I remember when that development, that little corner was being developed, and there were some potential challenges with that property. Do you remember that city administration, when those five little cluster homes were built right on the corner, and there was major issue and discussion, and almost pushback from the city saying, this isn't really the ideal site for development, because there could be some potential issues, and obviously, you're experiencing some of them.
Yeah, one of the factors is how are you going to expand the road without taking my property back up to it's the corner lot with all the trees and stuff? And so how are you going to take, how are you going to extend the roads to accommodate everything unless you start infringing on the back of my property? And then you'd say, well, we had to take it, expand the road, or take the other side, it could only go so far that you have to paralyze. So I just can't see how you can approve...
Well, here's what, let me interrupt, because we've had enough discussion on this. They have to have all of the engineering and the surveying done to proceed. Maybe they cut a little bit of the corner, you know, I'm not an engineer, but they have setbacks, we have ordinances and zoning guidelines, and it will be properly done. But right now, we're not going through an engineering and design phase through this evening, but they have proper setbacks, and there's other land on the other side of the road from where you're at, and maybe they lose some of their acres, because, again, when it comes to that road expansion, there are tight, tight guidelines to protect homeowners, unless there's an eminent domain issue and a state comes in, but, you know, those are, you know, pretty rare, yeah.
That's something that I'm afraid of, that somehow that'll be taken into effect and I'll lose my entire backyard.
Back to you, Mr. Sanders, I apologize.
No problem. Did you have, did you have anything else, Andrew, Mr. Dutton?
I do not, and I would just add, I believe the applicants may be a little bit confused on our order here, I think they thought the public hearing was the entire hearing, so they are not here, but I think we're representing it, their application as they intended.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask Andrew a quick question, just for the record?
Sure.
Just for the record, and since some people left, this did have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend the zoning changes, is that correct?
Correct. Unanimously, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I attended that meeting, it was thoroughly vetted, and there was public comment, and it was, again, only the zoning recommendation, not the development. They'll have to go back and say specifically what they're going to do behind your home before they're able to do it. I would recommend you look at the Planning and Zoning Code under, in the classification that's the property adjacent to you on the website. I don't know how many times Mr. Dutton's office, the secretary's tired, they see me when I have questions. He is available for quick questions if you have, how it gets applied. Jim Richard, who is the developer, has an office downtown, feel free to reach out to him if you have specific questions. He may or may not be able to answer.
So you're saying it's already been approved?
No.
The zoning, the zoning of this property was approved by Planning Commission, recommended by the Planning Commission, that's all that's...
Wasn't it approved to an R1 first, and we are now approving it to the commercial as well as the other, or has it been not approved for commercial?
It has not.
Okay, that's what, that's all I need to know.
Well, any farmland or vacant land that comes into the, that's annexed in the city comes in R1.
Right, right, I understand that, I'm talking to the office. I just wanted my concern, I don't want my backyard lost, I don't want three thousand more cars going down that road behind my house all day long now, that could value our property extensively. And how close you're going to take the road behind my property, maybe you might say, well, we want twenty-five feet, you'll get what's left. So then my yard might all of a sudden be twenty-five feet with a road right on the underside of it, and I might have to remove even some pine trees in the backyard, I don't know, because technically, when you have to make space for what you want, you will take the land that's going to be the easiest to take. And so I'm just worried about that. I don't want to live there, if that's the, all of us in our community need to know what's going to happen there.
Well, and candidly, ma'am, candidly, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
We don't know, there's been no development plans presented to the city.
What you're presenting is huge.
Oh, no, we fully understand that, and we fully understand, I mean, we hear what you're saying, I mean, we truly do, but at this point, I mean, you've asked us, can we tell you what's going to happen? The answer is unequivocally no. The only thing that we can tell you is that potentially, in the next two, in the next six weeks, we're going to either approve or not approve this zoning request. That's all we can tell you, specifically, that's all we can speak to.
And we could show up to that meeting and listen?
Absolutely.
And we will be, will we be sent information when the meeting enters, and we have to look it up?
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today?
Yeah, the next meeting for second reading, two weeks.
The next meeting that we will hear, that we will discuss this, is going to be on the, will be the first Monday.
I really appreciate your comments up there.
What's that? Yeah, it'll be October 1st, it'll be first Monday of the month, and then the next time that we potentially would talk about this will be the third Monday of next month.
And you just have to understand, our money's invested in this, it could have been handed down through other parents or whatever, their money, their work, so it could have been...
If you're going to tell me to have a go-in, just because we need to record everything you're saying, that very may not be getting out of check.
I think we, I think we resolve this issue tonight.
Very good.
Thanks, Mr. Dutton, I appreciate the clarification.
I guess with that, we've discussed this thoroughly this evening.
Well, we will consider more. Ordinance 2018 Day 016 is having its first reading. That brings us to Resolution Number 2018 Day 052. It'll be presented by Mr. Bostanzik, it's slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Bostanzik, I will ask Ms. Apollo to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-052, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a final resolution with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 83 within the City of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bostanzik, the floor is yours.
Yeah, well, thank you. This one's pretty straightforward, this project is a part of ODOT's urban paving program, and this will resurface a small section of State Route 83, south of town, near the Hilton Garden Inn. ODOT will pay eighty percent of the construction and engineering costs, leaving the city with an estimated cost of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This resolution will authorize the mayor to enter into a final resolution with ODOT for the project, and formally, council had passed a cooperative agreement with ODOT for this project on April 2nd of this year. And I open up to any comments or...
Well, usually, at this point in time, it's, Mr. Kobelarsik, would you like to add anything else?
Yes, this is, what it is, it's a small section of State Route 83 up on Madison Hill. ODOT's paving from the city limits down through to the south, this is just a little section up there, and our share is like just over fourteen thousand dollars.
All right. Glad to hear from you this evening, Mr. Kobelarsik.
There are no other comments, I would, since this is a budgeted item, I move to the ODOT.
Well, I think it's three readings, because it's entering into an agreement, but you can move to suspend the rules and then... Well, I think it's three readings because it's entering into an agreement, but you can move to suspend the rules and then?
Okay. So I move to suspend the rules and put this on third and final.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic. Second by Mr. Ansel, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yeah.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Do you have another motion?
Yes, I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is their second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Any other questions of Mr. Kobelarsik? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 Day 052 passes. We will be looking at resolution number 2018 Day 053. This is presented by Mr. Silvestri. This one is budgeted, so no suspension of rules will be required, will be required to have Mr. Apollo read the title.
Resolution number 2018 dash 053. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a water line to the North High Water Tower, an extension of the sanitary sewer north to the same area, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This piece of legislation is calling for, as you just heard, the construction of a water line to our North High Water Tower. The North High Water Tower is the water tower on the east side of Melrose Drive. It is the concrete column with the, I think the gray painted top, it's best described as that. We built that a few years ago to increase our capacity in the North High Zone. This is going to help not only current existing businesses such as Daisy Brand, who has come to our area because it is highly favorable for their type of business. And as a side note, as they continue to expand, I know they want to get into more products. In addition to sour cream, they're going to be getting into cottage cheese early next year as well. So they do have enough capacity currently, but this improves what they have available because it will be, it will create, pardon me, it will create a loop. And loops are always good for maintaining chlorine levels in our water. I know from speaking with Mr. Kobelarsik, the, we need some help in maintaining the chlorine level in that North High tank anyway. So by, by having this loop, it, it, it's favorable for retention of chlorine so that we can keep safe water. Secondly, it also provides better flow. And then thirdly, it also provides a second access point should Daisy's line be compromised, should one side be compromised or the other because of the loop that's created. So they're highly favorable in the water line world. And we're going to be, the new water line will be 4,000 linear feet of 12-inch ductile iron, which is our city's standard pipe. The sanitary sewer will be approximately 700 linear feet of 12-inch PVC. And then it does include two manholes. I do want to thank Roger Kobelarsik, our city engineer, for doing all of the engineering design work and, and the administration of the construction, the inspection, which are all going to be performed in-house by his department. So I want to thank him for saving the taxpayers' dollars on that portion of the project. The full amount is budgeted, so as I understand it, three readings are not required on this piece of legislation this evening. So with that introduction, I would move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Any comments towards Mr. Kobelarsik or questions?
We heard from you once, Mr. Kobelarsik, and we'd love to hear from you again if you have anything to add to this.
No, I think, Mr. Silvestri, you've covered it fairly well. The big thing is it's going to loop the line and it's going to help with the turnover rate in that tank. Which by turnover rate, I mean more water will be used out of it, directly out of the tank, which will keep the chlorine levels up.
He was speaking your language, I was impressed, Mr. Sanders.
He took notes.
If there's nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 hyphen 053 passes. We'll turn our attention to resolution number 2018 Day 054. This will be presented by Mr. Bastancic. It is budgeted, so we will not need to suspend the rules. But I'll turn my eyes to Ms. Apollo and ask her to please read the title.
Resolution number 2018 054. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of the storm sewer along Cleveland Road, north of Highland Avenue, and declaring an emergency.
And I note the next three will be Mr. Bastancic, so you'll be leading the parade out of here, so I give the floor to you.
Okay, thank you. Again, this one's fairly straightforward. This project will replace a deteriorated corrugated metal storm sewer pipe with a new plastic pipe, which will start roughly where Babbling is on Cleveland Road and continue south for about 260 linear feet. The estimated cost of the project is approximately $80,000 and this will come out of the storm sewer fund. And again, the city's going to do all the engineering and design work on this as well. That's pretty much covered, I think.
I have a question. Roger, can you tell me, we received an email approximately six weeks ago stating that a portion of Cleveland Road from Highland to the Dix Expressway is going to be reconfigured. And that was going to include like a center lane as opposed to the current four-lane configuration. Can you tell me if that is going to require repaving? Basically, are we going to be redundant in doing work now?
This is a storm sewer that's outside the pavement. It's an area that's already been repaired twice.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Have a motion for?
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is their second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 054 passes. Resolution number 2018 Day 055. Mr. Bastancic will be presenting it. It's also budgeted, so it will not require suspension of the rules. But if you would, once again, Ms. Apollo, please read the title.
Resolution number 2018 dash 055. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Environmental Design Group for professional engineering services related to the city's proposed venture park project and authorizing the necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. Before we go into this, we've got a revision of the resolution that added a new section. And I don't know if Andre was the one who did this. We wanted to just explain what it is.
You didn't get up there and speak.
I apologize. Hi, check one, two.
Okay.
But we weren't aware of that necessity to make that transfer until four o'clock today?
Well, I read the ordinance at four o'clock this afternoon, so I thought maybe that I should put it in there.
Kind of late, but.
Well, it is what it is.
Very good.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll start. Okay, this resolution is requesting $104,798 to enter an agreement with Environmental Design Group for the preparation of construction documentations for the walking trail, pavilions, and parking areas for the city's proposed venture park project. Of the amount requested, the Clean Ohio Fund will reimburse the city up to 75% of these costs, leaving the city with a final cost of $26,199 for these services. The city is requesting this to be a sole source bid with Environmental Design Group as they are already familiar with the project and it would more likely cost more to bid it out to a different design group who is not familiar with the project. Although this purchase is not a budgeted item, the city is requesting a suspension of the rules for earlier passage, which will speed up the design of the park so construction could begin in 2019. Roger, any?
No, it's for the design work for the new venture park right next to the new tennis court on the venture pool.
Have a motion?
Since this is not a budgeted item, I, we have to have a motion to go to third and final. According to my sheet, it's not budgeted.
It is not budgeted, part of it's.
Well, the legislation as drafted doesn't have it slated for three readings, which is why I.
It should be though.
It should be, should be three readings.
We can change that.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to suspend the rules and put this on third and final then.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic.
Second.
Or second, Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sanders?
Yes.
The rules are suspended, Mr. Bastancic.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion? Seems like we're getting a pretty good deal on this with the grant being involved. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 Day 055 passes. Our final piece of legislation, resolution number 2018 Day 056. This will be presented by Mr. Bastancic. And it is slated for three readings. So if we want to pass it tonight, the suspension of rules will be required. If you would, Ms. Apollo, we'll hear your dulcet tones one more time if you would read the title.
Resolution number 2018 056. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, to accept and apply such funds if awarded and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
Okay, what we have here is just, is just a request to authorize the administration for the application for and acceptance of $500,000 in grant money from the Ohio Public Works Commission for roadway improvements to, to begin in the year 2020 on West Highland from Oak Hill Road to Tatum Drive and for improvements on Sunset Lane from Armstrong Drive to Melrose Drive. This project will install curbs, gutters, new pavements, storms, sanitary sewers, a water line, and sidewalks in those areas. Total estimated cost is $1,738,000 with $500,000 coming from the Ohio Public Works Commission. The administration is requesting immediate passage of this legislation, so OPWC is currently reviewing projects for funding at this time. Now, this was, I think we all remember the, this has to do with the pack that we had a few weeks ago with the petition. This was what the petition was worried about, we had a few weeks ago, about the trees along Highland Avenue. And the residents there were worried about whether or not this proposed project in the future would take out those trees. And I'd like to emphasize that, one, it's not going to happen until 2020 and that, and number two is there are no design plans as of right now or construction drawings, so we do not know at this time if any or all, all of the trees will be affected at all until, at least till, what, who would you say? Sometime early next year, Roger?
Mid next year, about mid next year.
So, so we'll have to wait till then to see what the results would be of those, of those trees. Hopefully, hopefully the terrain is such and whatever that, we won't lose any trees. I know my father, my father was on that petition, so he'd be very mad at me if he did. So we'll have to wait till then though, because we really don't know what, know right now.
But your good friend, Mr. Sidewalks, could be mad at you too.
Yes. Well, I promised John I would work on sidewalks, so.
Yeah, so, hey, this is what you call a conundrum, yes.
All right, any questions or, Roger, do you have any comments?
So this is just the application?
This is just the application.
Okay. So do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I, like, do we need to suspend the rules on this?
Yeah.
Okay, I propose that we suspend the rules and put this on third and final.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic is their second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended, Mr. Bastancic.
I proposed it up.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is their second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2018 Day 056. This concludes our legislative portion. There is a request to go into executive session to talk about employment and legal proceedings.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to go into executive session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll to go into executive session?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
All right, we are temporarily out of our regular session. I'm watching, I'm watching you do that. There we go. Now, we have come out of the room from our executive session. I will need a motion to go back into regular session.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to go into regular session is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, would you please call the roll on the motion to go back into regular session?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
And that turns us, or that, we go officially now back in regular session. Turn to the miscellaneous portion and we'll start with Ms. Warden tonight.
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank all the residents who did come to speak to the rezoning of the property that we've annexed into the city of Worcester. I know a lot of them had a lot of concerns and I think just understanding the process as we worked through it helped to alleviate a lot of those. I would encourage them to keep coming, keep being part of the discussion. And one day, all of us will know the plans for that property. We don't know them now because they haven't been submitted to us. So I also wanted to thank the mayor for understanding. So this is a long time coming, but it's, it's fantastic, and I think it's gonna help government work even better, so thanks.
All right. Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I want to clarify two things that I am in support of. One, the Junior Fair and Livestock Events Center, I'm very much in support of the project. My only concerns were kind of clarification of how we might best utilize our funds and make, and do that. So I do support the mayor's recommendation. I look forward to approving that at our next meeting. The second issue or individual I am in 100% support of is our Director of Finance, Andre Doria. I didn't mean personally about the last-minute change. You are a very hardworking person, and I apologize, I did not mean it personally. I think most people on council have heard me complain or vent about these last-minute emergencies and changes to the agenda. Absolutely nothing you at all. You appreciate all the hard work you do, and I didn't mean it at all directed towards you. Thank you.
Mr. Cavan?
Nothing to add.
I'm your father.
Mr. Bastancic?
Just one quick thing. I had a request by Roger Kovalarsik to have a infrastructure committee meeting. He would like to go over the, have a review of what was done over the past year, and he'd like to try to do that perhaps in either the next meeting or perhaps a meeting after that. We're looking maybe about 6:30 before the meeting. So, checking on times.
Okay.
Do we have, do we have a consensus that either first, either next meeting or the meeting after that in October? The next meeting, I think the first of October.
I would, I would be available, I would talk.
Yep, me, too.
First, next meeting? We'll do it the first?
The first. If Mr. Kovalarsik is ready, we-
Yeah, he, yeah. Apparently he is, because he suggested those two times, so.
Okay.
At 6:30, you say?
6:30.
Okay.